Good evening and welcome to the Municipality of Anchorage zoning board of examiners and appeals, October 11th, 2018 meeting. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Dave Hale.
Here.
Ellen McKay.
Here.
Dale Smythe.
Here.
Stephanie Iker.
Here.
Lisa Dole. Ken Ayers.
Here.
Tonya Hickok.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so the first item on the agenda, other than the roll call, is the approval of minutes. We have minutes for September 13th. Could I have a positive motion? Motion from Ms. Iker, second by Mr. Ayers. Your motion, Ms. Iker?
Motion to approve. I'm going to abstain because I wasn't present.
Okay. Is there any objection to approval of the minutes? I should note that there was a slight change to the minutes, a slight correction before, but anyway. Seeing none, the minutes are approved and we'll move on to special order of business. Are there any disclosures?
I was not, I'm not going to... Actually, I don't, we already did that, right? Never mind. Okay, I'm going to abstain from the consent agenda because I was not present for the September 13th meeting and I've not listened to the video recording.
Any other disclosures? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is all the items before the board that do not require a public hearing, heard without discussion. May I have a positive motion for approval of the consent agenda? Well, before that, does anyone want to pull an item from the consent agenda? And again, there's been a slight correction to case 2018-0080. Could I have a positive motion for the approval of the consent agenda? Ms. Iker?
Move to approve.
Mr. Smythe? Is there any objection to approval of the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved and we move on to... Nothing under unfinished business, nothing under the regular agenda or appearance requests, so we're on to the public hearings. So both cases this evening that we're hearing are variance requests. And for hearing variance, for variance hearings, we follow the rules of procedure in Title 21. And that calls for me to read the procedure to be followed. So the chair will introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The board will hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The staff will present a brief outline of the variance. Board members and the applicant may then ask questions of the staff through the chair. The applicant has 10 minutes to present their case. They may reserve time for rebuttal. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant to convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. The board members and the staff may then ask questions of the applicant through the chair. Then the hearing will be open for public testimony. Representative of groups have five minutes, individuals have three minutes. The time is kept by the secretary.
Ma'am, could you turn the volume up? I can't hear you. I mean, I can't tell what you're saying. I can hear a little bit.
Thank you, through the chair. Can everyone hear? The volume...
It might be where you're sitting. It's a round room and so the acoustics are weird. And you might want to see if there's a better place. And I'll move closer to the microphone. Are you one of the applicants, sir?
He's the applicant in the second case.
Okay, so what do you think we should do to proceed here?
We should just proceed.
Just proceed, okay. Representative of groups have five minutes, individuals have three minutes. The time is kept by the secretary. The display in the front here will be green within one minute of the time allowed. Then it will turn yellow. At this time, you should begin to sum up your testimony. At the end of the allowed time, the light will turn red and a tone will sound. All persons who testify may be questioned by the board members, the staff, and the applicant. On conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have the right of rebuttal. The chair will close the public hearing and the matter will rest with the board. Any action by the board shall require the favorable vote of a majority of the fully constituted board, and a fully constituted board is nine members. So the variant, so it requires five votes, even though there are only seven of us here. So it's of the fully constituted board. There should be nine, but by code 2112-230B, it does take five votes to approve a request. And for a variance to be granted, all eight of the standards must be met. Every decision of the board shall clearly state on its face that it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to Superior Court. So the first case is case 2018-0096. The petitioner is Ray Torgerson. So... Will the staff, will the staff describe the notice given in the case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. 105 public hearing notices were mailed for this case. No comments were received. Also, no comments were received from the Chugiak Community Council.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice? Seeing none, the staff will give their brief outline. Will you please present the case?
This is a request to allow a two-story house to encroach 17.5 feet into the 50-foot rear setback. The owner constructed the house under an approved land use permit in 2007 and was issued a final certificate of occupancy by the building safety division. The original permit and certificate of occupancy was issued in error by the building safety division because the encroachment was shown on the as-built. The encroachment was only discovered this year when the owner applied for a land use permit to add a shed to his property. In regards to standard number one, the approval criteria is met. The property slopes deeply downhill to the northeast, which forced the house to be placed at the rear of the lot, necessitating this encroachment. There is a retaining wall north side of the lot. There's a photograph behind a couple of as-builts, a few pages into the packet, where Deer Park Drive cuts through the north side of the property within a public use easement on the property. The lot is further encumbered by a private access agreement, or private access easement on the east side of the lot to the lot behind this one. The private access easement takes up approximately a quarter of the property apart from the Deer Park Drive public use easement. Both public water and sanitary sewer are not available to this property. On-site septic systems and a private well are located in front of the house. The steep grade of the land and the public access easement, and the public access easement and the private access easement and the septic system and private well, all taken together create an extraordinary physical circumstance for this property. Approval criteria number two is met. Strict application of the R6 district requires a 50-foot setback from the south rear property line. The two-story house was constructed under an approved land use permit and received final certificate of occupancy in 2007. The approved as-built was stamped by Tina Brooks, the zoning plan reviewer at the time, which shows the house encroaching into the rear setback. The setback violation was only discovered this year when they applied for a permit to build a shed. The current 2018 as-built nearly matches the 2007 as-built with the final approved certificate of occupancy. Two-story homes are a common right of enjoyment in this district, and the required setback creates an undue hardship on the property owner. The building safety division clearly made an error in approving this certificate of occupancy in 2007. The hardship, I'm sorry, approval criteria number three is also met. No other lot in the area has two access easements and topography challenges across the property. The variance would allow a 35% encroachment into the rear setback. The need for the variance is a result of both physical constraints on the land and mistakes made by the zoning plan reviewer and building safety division during the permitting of this house. Approval criteria number four is met. There are no structure separation violations. Drainage is not an issue. There have been no objections from the neighbors or the community council. The nearest neighbor, the closest neighbor to the encroachment has a very large lot with a home already constructed, and it's a great distance from the home, the subject of this variance. The encroachment is not visible because of the thick forest separating the two homes. Approval criteria number five is met. The requested variance is dimensional and not a use variance. Approval criteria number seven is met. There's no health, safety issues related to the variance. Approval criteria number seven, it's not related to ADA, accessibility, or reasonable accommodation. Approval criteria number eight is substantially met. The variance may be the minimum variance that will make it possible to have a house of a similar size and amenities as other houses in the neighborhood. The encroachment is not visually obvious since there is on the rear of the property. Therefore, the department's recommending approval of this variance, finding that the eight approval criteria are substantially met. The approval should be subject to conditions one and two on page five of your packet. These are standard conditions of approval. Elsewhere in your packet, the final certificate of occupancy is on page six, and the paperwork behind it, number seven, or page number seven. The as-built as it is today, which is the basis of this variance request, is on page eight of your packet. There's a topography map on page nine, and then photos of the forest on page 10, the retaining wall on page 11, and some other pictures showing the slope of the property, and aerial photos on 14 and 16. I'd be happy to answer any questions. The petitioner is here to give a presentation as well. Thank you.
Are there any questions of the staff by the board? Are there any questions of the staff by the petitioner? Okay, will the petitioner or the applicant, or the applicant or the applicant's representative please come forward, state, and spell your name for the record, please?
Yes, good evening. My name is Ray Torgerson. Ray, R-A-Y, Torgerson, T-O-R-G-E-R-S-E-N.
Please present your case.
I'm sorry?
Please present your case.
Okay, thank you. Well, good evening. Again, I'm Ray Torgerson. This is my wife, Kako. I'd like to thank the board for hearing my case, and I'd like to also thank the staff for their help with the planning division and helping me walk through this process. I did not realize an error was made at the time my house was built. However, now that I know that an error had occurred, it was, the error was caused by the surveyor, the excavator, foundation people, the builder, framer, I'm not sure. I put, placed good faith and trust in them in constructing my home. My lot is rectangle, and everything on my land was accessed from the west side of the road, leading everyone, including myself, to believe that it was the front of my property. After my home was built, my builder told me to ensure, to maintain a 25-foot distance from my house to the property line. I didn't understand what he meant at the time, but I wasn't concerned because I had well over that distance. After the home was built, the municipality, as it was stated, approved my as-built and gave me a certificate of occupancy in December of 2007. It wasn't until this year of June, while applying for a shed permit, that the municipality informed me that the permit was being refused due to a setback issue. I asked them to explain that, and they told me that the north side of my property was considered to be the front of my property and not the west side. This is when they informed me that my home was not in compliance, because now I needed a 50-foot distance from my property line, not a 25 on the south side. So I then applied for a variance. In my application review that was sent to me in September of 2018, all the required reviewing offices found that each standard was met or substantially met and recommended approval of this variance. As stated earlier, I had good faith and trust in my builders, but also in the municipality that when they approved everything over 11 years ago, it would still be so today. For these reasons, I'm respectfully requesting my variance to be granted, and I thank you for hearing me.
Seven minutes? You have seven minutes and 30 seconds for rebuttal.
Right.
Are there any questions of the applicant by the board member? Does anybody have any questions? Any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, so the public hearing is now open for public testimony. Is there anyone wishing to testify in the case? Please come forward, state, and spell your name for the record, please.
Yes, Antonio Diaz. It's A-N-T-O-N-I-O, last name Diaz, D-I-A-Z.
Go ahead.
I live at, I live at 22469 Deer Park Drive. Mr. Ray's property is in front of ours, and I just got a couple of points. Maybe you could clarify with me. First point is the land regulations are 25 feet in front, 25 feet on the side, and 15 in the back. I understand that. But page six indicates that the house is at 36 feet from the property. That's on page six, and, which is 14 feet from the 50 feet. And page five indicates 17.5 feet from the setback, which is 32 feet from the regulation. So I'm not quite sure how far is this house from the property, from the edge of the property. So that's one question that I have there, because I'm not sure if it's a mistake on the process and application. So I want to know what is it now, or what's the deal with that? The other one is that when the property line was measured, I wasn't sure when that was, but I do see some new tapes on the trees, and I'm just concerned about that because I don't know if they were the same property line. I need to know that. I think that is fair, that goes through. The other thing is that I don't want, I don't want any hardship on my neighbor, so whatever happens, I do want him to get approved for this. However, I want to make sure, what is the rule for, after this, is it going to be always after his property set for whatever feet from the property? That's fine, and then if he wants to in the future, that he sells, somebody wants to build another shed or something closer to the line, is that going to happen again? So whatever we approve is fine. I just want him to realize that we don't want any problems with the neighbor. And that's it right there.
I can answer the question about the variance. The variance runs with the land, so it doesn't, it isn't just the owner. If he sold it and somebody else bought the property, then the variance would be for them as well. As for the other questions, is, do you have anything? Does the staff have anything?
Yes, thank you for the questions. So no decision made by the board tonight is precedent-setting, so any other applicant will have to justify on their own how they meet the standards, and it's not assumed because one variance is granted that a different owner or a different neighbor could also be granted the same variance. It's not precedent-setting. This variance is only for the location of the existing house. That house has been there since 2007. There's no changes proposed to it. This variance, the granting this variance would allow the house to stay right where it is, but that doesn't mean that, you know, an addition could be placed on the house to encroach further, or that other structures could be built other than what's existing. This is only for, to keep things the way they are. So your other question was about the difference in the two as-builts. So the as-built that was done in 2007 on page six of your packet by surveyor Robert Johnson was associated with the closeout of the final certificate of occupancy on the land use permit, and that shows a dimension from the corner of the home of 36 feet distance. And then the as-built taken by a different surveyor, APB Land Surveying, and this was done just a few months ago, or weeks ago, this as-built is more current and was, they were very careful to dimension the distance between the lot line and the corner of the home, and actually, the bay window is the proper place to gauge the encroachment. See, the bay window encroaches another foot and a half or two feet from the, let's see, another foot and a half closer than the corners of the building does. Anyway, so this variance is written, so there's a reason why the two as-builts are different. Some years have passed, it's a different surveyor. This current surveyor, the most recent one, they took great care at dimensioning the corner of the lot, or the corner of the home, and actually, it's measured from the bay window, not the corner of the home. So those might be some of the reasons for the difference between the two as-builts, in my experience. Does that answer your question, sir?
No, sir. So what is the actual distance between the building and the line?
It's 32.5 feet between the building and the line at the shortest, at the closest location.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. That should do it.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in case 2018-0096? Anyone at all? Okay. So, does the staff have any rebuttal?
No.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal?
Yes, I'd just like to just readdress what his questions were. First of all, he's asking about other things being able to build on my property or anything. Well, this was all due to trying to apply for a shed and being able to put it on that side near that property line, and it was denied, so it's not, anything on that side of that property cannot be built because it's already been denied by the municipality because of the setback. So I can't build anything on that side. Yeah, and then as far as the surveying, I had to get a current survey. So the person that surveyed my land initially, who had just died this year, he used to do it with a pencil and everything, and even then, the width of a pencil lead could set that off a few feet or here and there, is what I was told by my new surveyor. So actually, when they surveyed, the property line was actually drawn even closer towards my house, and even pushed out five feet on the other side. So that's why the discrepancy in the property line, it's not going towards their property, it's actually coming in more towards mine. So even with surveying, errors can be made too, and that's the difference between the surveying and then the denial of any property being built or any additional structures being built in that direction were all denied by the municipality. So I hope that answers this question. I appreciate his time in coming out, and thank you for listening to me.
Does the staff have anything to say? Does the board have anything? Okay, then the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Please. Pretty please? Mr. Hale, is there a second, Ms. Iker? Mr. Hale, would you speak to your motion, please?
I move to approve the variance for case number 2018-0096, subject to the department findings and conditions on page five.
A second?
Mr. Hale?
So I intend to support my motion. I find that, number one, that physical circumstances do come into play and that the placement of the house is dependent on that. So I find that condition number one is met. It's the same for number two. The hardship would create, it would be undue hardship. If you had to work with that, it'd probably require a lot of earth movement and whatnot. So I think that the physical circumstances would cause undue hardship, so I believe that that standard is met as well. The physical circumstances on the property is not self-imposed, which means for me that standard number three is met. Condition number four, variance of grant would adversely affect the use of adjacent property. I don't believe that it will adversely affect adjacent properties. I believe that condition four is met as well. It's not changed the character of the zoning at all with the house there. I don't, I don't believe it does. Condition five is met. And health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality is not adversely affected. So I believe number six is met. I don't believe number seven applies, and I believe that standard number eight is met because it is a minimum variance that'll make possible use, reasonable use of the land.
Thank you, Ms. Iker.
I concur with Board Member Hale's comments, and would like to add that with regards to standard number one, I found that the standard was met in particular by the physical characteristics of the property, being the steep slope of the property, the public use easement burdening the property, the private access easement burdening the property, and the fact that the property is not serviced by public water and sewer, and so it has to have onsite water and sewer, septic systems and wells. Those same characteristics of the property were what I found to meet standard number two as well, the steep topography in particular. I agree with Mr. Hale that the hardship was not self-imposed, and that the circumstances did not merely meet or constitute an inconvenience of standard number three. Again, the physical characteristics of the property really drove the location and placement of the house. And I don't have anything to add to Mr. Hale's comments with respect to standards four through eight, so I support the earlier remarks he made.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? If not, then we shall vote. Okay, so there are seven yeses, no nos, so the variance is granted. Okay, the next case is case 2018-0103. Albert Saroyan is the petitioner. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On August 24th, 2018, a total of 279 public hearing notices were mailed. One comment was received and is documented in this public hearing packet.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Thank you. I'd like to note that the original application for this dimensional variance was submitted on August 21st, 2018 by Jim Baum. Ownership of the property is transferred to Albert Saroyan on September 12th, 2018. As such, Mr. Saroyan has taken over the application and is the petitioner in this case. So, this is a request to allow existing decks and stairs to encroach 1.6 feet into a seven-foot private zero lot line maintenance easement. The recorded seven-foot maintenance easement is on the south side of the petitioner's lot, Lot 29, and is dedicated to the budding lot, 28. A three-foot maintenance easement also exists on the north side of the petitioner's lot, and is dedicated to a budding lot, 30. Each pair of maintenance easements throughout the subdivision provides a total separation of 10 feet between structures in the subdivision, which was required by the zero lot line code requirements that were in effect at the time of plating and construction. As also concluded in the attached non-conforming determination, the petitioner's structure is not a legal, non-conforming structure, since the decks and stairs encroach upon the seven-foot private maintenance easement that is required per the plated zero lot line easements. And as for findings, the department finds that standard A is not substantially met. The lot in question is not subject to any extraordinary physical circumstances, and is dimensionally similar to other lots in the subdivision. The department finds that standard B is not substantially met. As noted in standard A, there are no exceptional physical circumstances affecting the property that would create an undue hardship. The applicant's lot has dimensions and topography that are similar to other lots in the district, and no streams, wetlands, or other constraining environmental factors are present. A variance is not necessary, because the petitioner's decks and stairs could be rebuilt to smaller dimensions that do not encroach into the seven-foot maintenance easement. The department finds that standard C is not substantially met. As documented, the petitioner's hardship is self-imposed. While the petitioner himself may not have caused the nonconformities, the hardship was inflicted onto the property by previous property owners through construction of the encroaching decks and stairs. The original petitioner for this application signed a hold harmless agreement with the Pacific Northwest Title of Alaska, Inc., on March 29th, 2010, acknowledging the encroachment that is subject to this variance request. The department finds that standard D is substantially met. The 10-foot private maintenance easements were recorded on the plat that created the zero lot line subdivision in order to mitigate the abatement of one side yard and to ensure adequate separation between the structures. The petitioner's decks and stairs project 1.6 feet into the seven-foot south easement that is dedicated to a budding lot, 28. However, this condition has been present for years. The encroachment still leaves 5.4 feet of clearance between the petitioner's structure and Lot 28, and no complaints from the adjacent properties have been received to date. The department finds that standard E is substantially met. The requested variance is dimensional and would not allow prohibited use, and would not change the character of the zoning district as a whole. The department finds that standard F is substantially met. There are no identified health or safety issues with the structure or proposed encroachment. The department finds that standard G is substantially met. The standard is not applicable to detached single-family residences, duplexes, and triplexes. And the department finds that standard H is not substantially met. A reasonable use of the land is possible without the dimensional variance. The primary conforming alternative available to the petitioner is reduce the width of the decks and stairs so they no longer encroach into the seven-foot maintenance easement.
Thank you.
ANC 2103240G requires that all eight standards be substantially met in order for a variance to be granted. The department finds that standards A, B, C, and H are not substantially met, and therefore recommends denial of the variance. If, after a public hearing, the board finds that all eight standards are substantially met, then the approval should be subject to the conditions found on page six of the staff packet.
Thank you. Are there any questions by the board? Ms. Dole?
Through the chair. Could you explain your comment with regard to criteria B? The statement that the decks and stairs could be rebuilt to smaller dimensions that do not encroach into the seven-foot maintenance easement? Could you tell us what you based that on?
That's based on a conversation with the building safety department that was shown the as-built, and clarified that three feet is required as a minimum width for stairs that provide ingress egress for exterior access. And then, so, between, the 2018 as-built shows that there's 3.6 feet available between the south side of the building and the beginning of the seven-foot maintenance easement. So, greater than three feet is available currently to construct, reconstruct the staircase.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions. This is my first meeting, so I'll get there. Are there any other questions of staff by the board? Are there any questions of staff by the applicant? Will the applicant or the applicant's representative, please come forward, state, and spell your name for the record?
My name is, my name's Albert Saroyan, A-L-B-E-R-T-S-A-R-O-Y-A-N. And I am the new owner of 202 Misty Glen, where I'm applying for the variance on the decks that encroach into the maintenance easement. Colin Wells stated that the structures were built prior. One of the things, I'm not sure how this goes, but in speaking with life and safety, there's a lot of things that weren't accounted for in order to move those stairs back. So, for example, a doorway, there's gutter and downspouts that are accessed behind there that are moving water away from the foundation of the building, as well as there's water lines that are coming up, hose bibs and other water mains, that are all accessed on the side of the stairwell. So, in looking at that, I'm unable to bring it back 18 inches and stay within building code. I'll have less than 27 inches of stairwells to the main entry of the house. Secondly, on this particular issue, it appears that, by photos, that are shown in the application on August 20th, 1986, the deck is the exact deck that was placed by the original builder, Douglas H. Main. And those decks were approved through the building process. I know he pulled the building permit, which we had asked to see a copy of that, and were unable to find through this process. And lastly, I'd like to say that the decks and entry are not degrading the value, not causing any harm to the maintenance easement, or lack of use between my neighbor and myself. And I found in the declaration, which is also in this packet, there is Section 7C, which talks about if there's unusual circumstances where there's encroachments into the maintenance easement, it can be dealt with through arbitration should need be. And in this case, my neighbor, Randy Gibbs, who has lived on that side for over 19 years, has written a letter in regards to that arbitration agreement that I'd like to submit as an exhibit if possible. Yes.
Okay. Do we want to stop that for a minute?
And that would conclude my introduction.
Are there any questions of the applicant by the board members? Ms. Iker, could you, Mr. Saroyan, could, Ms. Iker has a question.
Yes.
Thank you for your testimony. I was hoping that you could speak a little bit more about the impediments against moving the stairs. You're saying that you have drainage issues, or I didn't?
Yeah, correct. So, that's a main area where a large gutter is coming down, and the gutter and downspouts are tucked back behind the stairwell. So, in order to move that, there's no, it actually goes back behind the decks and then out into the easement where the grade drops down into a swale. So, that would need to be rerouted, and there's not a good way of doing it.
And, I'm sorry, I'm quickly looking for the survey in your, in the packet. Are you speaking about just the porch encroachments that look like they go to the front door? Are you also speak, are you also speaking about the deck encroachments on the backside of your house?
Just the porch by the front door. So, the, something that was also, that's kind of ambiguous in the report, is that there was some talk that somewhere down the road, somebody had increased the deck. And the deck has never been increased out into the maintenance easement. The deck was, and you could get testimony from neighbors that have lived there, has been increased backwards to the property line in adding a few feet to take steps into the backyard. So, nothing was additionally added into the easement.
And I guess that's the heart of my confusion right now, because it looks like what you're talking about on our page 36 in the packet, looks like you're talking about the stairs and the porch encroaching, and having to reroute, the struggles with having to reduce those stairs right there to just the three feet?
Correct.
What you're telling me is that to reduce those stairs would actually cause quite a few other things to have to be changed or moved in order to comply with code?
Absolutely.
Okay. And so, then that brings me to, I think, my confusion, is there was reference in here that the deck was enlarged, but what you're talking about, the stairs right here, is different than what you're saying for the deck. This deck back here was not enlarged into?
That was not enlarged into the easement. So, the deck, there's a sliding glass door that was existing from the existing structure. So, that sliding glass door went out to a deck that just terminated to a deck, had no access to the backyard. And all of that was original. So, what they wanted to do was have access to the backyard, and they took the deck north-ish, so out to the back of the property line, and then turned stairs to the left going down to the backyard.
So, when the deck was expanded, it was this part that included the stairs and to the rear of the house? It wasn't the part that extended out towards the adjacent lot line?
That's correct.
Okay. And is there any issues? Scratch that question.
Any other questions?
Any other questions of the applicant? No, thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No, thank you.
Okay, so, now the hearing is open for public testimony. Is there anyone wishing to testify? Please come forward.
Okay, oh yeah, Randy Gibbs, you're first.
State your name and spell it for the record, please.
My name is Randy Gibbs. You'll see on the signed letter, it's Charles Gibbs, that's my legal name. R-A-N-D-Y, last name G-I-V-P-S.
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm in Lot 2116, so that would be, I think, Lot 29. I'm the one who wrote the letter saying that it doesn't encroach or bother me in any way. I'd like to point out a couple of things. There's three actual cul-de-sacs that were all built at the same time. I don't know if that's in the packet. All the houses are virtually one of five or six plans, you know, so obviously the same builder. And I know that there's in the variance, there's something about if it's above 36 inches, it has to meet code for the easement, and if it's below 36 inches, it doesn't. But all of these front entryways, and this is the front door to the house we're talking about, we're not talking about, you know, like an add-on deck to a back door or something. This is the front steps going to the front door. They're all built the same way. And one of the other gentlemen here, he has a plop map, and he can show you all of the ones that are not in compliance. So, it's kind of concerning that if I want to sell my house, I could run into this same problem. And one last thing I'd like to point out quickly. I expanded my upstairs deck going over my driveway, and that was back in 2001, and I got a permit for that, but it took me all summer, and I ended up having to put the deck up in the winter, because they didn't want to grant the permit for this same reason, because my front steps encroached into the easement. I actually have the permit, so I couldn't make copies. Do you want to see it, or?
No, that's fine.
Okay. That's all I've got.
Any questions of? Mr. Gibbs?
Thank you.
Oh, Stephanie, sorry. Oh, no. All right.
We're good?
Yeah, we're good. Thanks. Anyone else wishing to testify in this case? Come forward, please.
My name is James Baum. I'm the original appellant. Albert here bought the house from my son. My son was a schoolteacher at Diamond High School, bought the house over 10 years ago. There was no problem with his financing, anything happened. What happened was when Albert's appraiser made it, the variance be an approved, a condition of the appraisal. And then, I'm the one that paid for this hearing, for this appeal. The city, Colin switched it over to the appellant after Albert bought the house. My son was taught high school, at Diamond High School, that's why he lived there, was close to the school. And then, he moved to Seattle two years ago. And I got stuck with trying to sell his house, getting it all ready, and I paid for all the expenses to fix it up, because my son didn't have the money, and to get it ready to sell. And I paid $395 for the first variance request with Sonnet Calhoun. She said she could not, didn't find the building permits even for the house. They were all built that way. My brother and I, and the man who just testified, Randy, earlier went and measured other houses in the area, the distance between their entryway, because these lots are only 50 feet wide, and the stairs going up and the railing around their stairs. I brought him over, gave him to Colin pictures. I have pictures of 15 houses in that subdivision. Here's the plat. Eight of those were built by the same builder, Douglas Main Premier Construction. All eight of his houses are built, not just his, but several others. There's 15 houses, I have the list here. I gave them to Colin, and I gave him pictures of all the houses, showing, the only way you can get an entry to most of those houses is, you know, beside the house. The garages face the street, they're very narrow lots. It was originally zoned for zero lot line, and they rezoned it in 1986. It was originally zoned for zero lot line and they rezoned it in nineteen eighty-five. All these houses were built in nineteen eighty-six. See, Douglas Main was also the developer of the subdivision. His name is signed right here in two places. He worked under different entities, Premier Construction, the Main Company. He developed Sand Lake Subdivision, Tudor Center, a couple subdivisions in Eagle River, and he built several homes. I went through the DNR records, I got three pages of transactions, notice of completions, sent to, some sent to the Muni of Anchorage. I have a copy of the notice of completion from this house. Sonnet Calhoun said there was no, she couldn't find the building permits. She said, well, back then it was going crazy, the construction boom. They might be in archives, she didn't know where they were, if, if they existed. But a friend was an engineer for Arnhem Consulting, who did all the engineering work for Douglas Main. He's now retired, lives in Spokane, Washington. But he said he knows that Douglas Main, with all, as big a builder as he was, would not have built without building permits.
Could you, your time is, your time is up, so could you kind of wrap it up?
Well, there's, it's not just this one house. There's fifteen houses in that subdivision. Several, which is right here. And I have pictures of them all in the list. I don't know if Colin passed the list on to you people. And it gives the distances, my son's house is eight and a half feet from the neighbor, you know, the, the deck, who now Albert owns. A lot of these other houses, some of them are only six feet from their, from their entryway railings to the neighbor's house. I mean, it should be something special granted for the subdivision because a unique subdivision, because of the way the zoning process went and it all happened.
Okay.
And my time cost him three months because the appraiser, it took him a long time. The mortgage company's attorney finally got the appraiser to delete that requirement from the appraisal. So they, then Albert was allowed to buy it and get the financing.
Okay.
And I had no, no knowledge till recently that I was no longer the appellant. The Muni, I guess, switched it over since Albert now was the owner.
Right.
Even though he didn't pay for it, I did. But.
Are there any questions of Mr. Baum?
Well, it's not, I mean, it's not, the neighbor even said, he wrote a letter that he had no objection to my son's house, you know, I mean, the railing being eight and a half feet from his house. Because he knows a lot of the other neighbors are closer.
Are there any questions of Mr. Baum by the board? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward.
Thank you for your time in listening to this. My name is Nancy Hall, N.A.N.C.Y.H.A.L.L. And I am directly on the other side of the said property. And I also have the side entrance into my home. And it's of great concern to me that they're even suggesting that we make our stairs narrower. It would make it unsafe, I feel, if we were to have coming up the stairs with a child and with ice, coming up the stairs with pets and there's ice. To make those stairs narrower, to come and go, one person coming up and one person coming down, I think it's a safety hazard for starters. It hasn't, I've been in my home for nearly twenty-one years and I have not had anybody address a problem with our porches being too close to the other homes. Maybe we all feel they are, but it isn't our fault that the builder built them that way and the city permitted it. So I request of you to approve his ordinance because it's the logical thing to do and it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Any questions by the board of Ms. Hall? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward.
My name's Chris Anton, C.H.R.I.S.A.N.T.O.N. I live directly across from Albert's house. And to, to add to the, the issue of these houses and their proximities, I measured the distance between my, like, mentioned before, all these houses are side entries. Every one of them, garage faces the front, side entries. If you want to go to code, I would be only allowed six inches to get into my house from the driveway. So it, it, it's, from what I was told, what I understand is that this code was issued in nineteen eighty-five. The houses were built in eighty-six. And I guess there was, was it reissued? They were going to be originally zero lot line and then they became single-family homes instead. Something was missed there, somebody dropped the ball. But now that this has been bought up and many homes have been sold and bought, including mine over the years, many times, I just don't want to see this happen to all of us in these three different cul-de-sacs. They're going to have the same issue. So that's a lot of people this is going to affect. So I would respectfully request to have a serious look at this and maybe have this variance granted. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Anton? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward.
I'd like to say, good afternoon, everyone. Name, Sefton Hemingway. And Sefton is S.E.F.F.T.O.N. Hemingway, H.E.M.I.N.G.W.A.Y. And I'd just like to say that, actually, just confirming everything that my neighbors have said earlier. I've lived there probably about thirty years, so I was one of the original, first homeowners. And as they stated, our entryway is right upside to the garage. And, and our garage faces the street. And, and these, excuse me, steps or entryway was created by the original builders. And I have had my home refinanced and so forth. I have not had any issue with, say, the appraisal or inspectors saying that there was a problem. So I too feel that this is bringing some undue burden and hardship to us for something that the inspectors, appraisals, surveyors, et cetera, should have pointed out or someone advised us about this. But to say now, we all may be facing the same issue if we wanted to sell our homes according to today's, I guess, ordinance standards, which apparently didn't seem to be abid by in two thousand, I'm sorry, in nineteen eighty-six, et cetera. Or our person wouldn't have bought the property if I know that I already was out of compliance with the ordinance. So all our homes are that way. And as Chris mentioned, if we narrow the steps, then we're subject to safety issues to be issued to us because they're not properly, at proper width and so forth. Because as I was saying, mine is totally right up against the frame of the house and it's just a standard side step that was poured concrete. And I hadn't done any kind of addition, et cetera. So I don't think it's fair. And I don't think it's something that should be placed upon a property owner that, we didn't bring this about and it wasn't out of our negligence or our doing. So I, to appeal to the board and to the staff, to the folks here that this gentleman here should be granted the right to buy that property, but not have to be subject to this variance causing him or any of us undue or unbrought about upon ourselves these issues that we're now faced with. So, thank you very much.
Any questions of Mr. Hemingway?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. There weren't, so, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify? Anyone at all? Okay. Does the staff have any rebuttal?
Not at this time.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal?
No rebuttal. I just want to reiterate that I feel that it's a safety issue, just like Nancy had said, in order to try to reduce those stairs down. And in my case, it's next to impossible without doing a major overhaul and reconstruction. And I just also want to just make a point that in the application, the photo does, is shown nineteen eighty-six, August twentieth. So that, and that was just four months after they had got a certificate of occupancy and the entryway was there standing. That's it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so we're going to close. Tanya, I'm sorry, Ms. Hickok, you have a question for the applicant?
Yes, please.
Mr. Soroyan?
Quick question, what page was that photo on?
Page ninety-one.
Thank you.
It, it seems a little difficult to see in page ninety-one. I think in, there's another application that I saw a more legible photo.
Are you able to find it?
Thank you.
Ms. Hickok also has a question of staff?
Through the chair. It states in Sonnet Calhoun's non-conforming determination that it was determined that there was an addition, but it doesn't state how they know it, it just said the previous information indicates. Page eighty-nine.
Yeah, so the addition, or the determination of the addition per the non-conforming determination was made based upon several aerial photos that were taken in nineteen eighty-five and nineteen eighty-six. And then later on in, let me. Right, my apologies. So in nineteen ninety, there was a aerial photo showing the structure on the lot. Now, the decks weren't visible in that photo per the non-conforming determination. And then, based upon the, or so on page ninety-one, the photo that shows the structure completed in nineteen eighty-six, the accompanying sketch, which also shows the property's tax ID number, shows that the deck, based on the sketch here, the deck appears to be, between the difference between the sketch and the as-built in twenty eighteen, the difference between those two conditions appears to indicate that the deck was enlarged at some point. So that's the primary, the aerial photos and the difference between the sketch and the current as-builts is the way that determination was made.
The sketch on page ninety-one?
Page ninety-one, my apologies.
Are you okay, Tanya?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Smythe?
Is it still my time or am I done?
One more question from Mr. Smythe.
Thank you, through the chair. I'm not sure if this question for the applicant or the staff, but there's two, there's, for clarification, there's page thirty-five of the packet, there's reference to the association. Is there a homeowners association involved in this neighborhood? I'm seeing no from the residents. So the, the next question, what, what's the width of the existing stair now? And what brought up, brought up this issue outside of the financing? Is that the only thing?
Yeah, so the width of the stair right now is forty-four and a half inches. What brought this up was in, in the financing process, the appraiser had looked at the survey and saw, and seen through the two thousand and eighteen survey that there was that eighteen-inch encroachment. And he just had written that in his report. And the lender said that because it was a non-conforming structure, they couldn't value the overall structure of the home. So when they ended up talking to their lawyers on the financing side, the lawyer said, we don't need to count the deck in the structure, in the value of the home as far as the financing goes. So they backed the deck out as if it was just the rest of the structure in order to get by the financing.
Thank you. Question for staff then, my understanding, this is, it's a maintenance easement only. So it was created, this is just from my own clarification, this was created by the developer and as we read here, only for the maintenance of the homes within this development, correct?
So the maintenance easements were intended for that purpose, to facilitate access to each side of the structure. The reason they were, they are present is due to an assembly ordinance in nineteen eighty-five requiring such separation between structures in all zero lot line subdivisions. And the easements are, are recorded on the plat due to that ordinance and the resulting change of that ordinance made to Title twenty-one at the time, the land use codes.
So this, some of it's really confusing to me in this whole thing because of so many landowners. The fact that there's no zero lot lines home, there's no zero lot line homes built. This is all single-family and that's on the plat. Is this, I, there's a lot of inconsistencies and things that aren't clear to me that we're even considering this case. But I'm assuming that staff has examined this and this is the appropriate place to review this?
Yes, it's, since it's, involves easements on a plat. Regardless of how they came about, the easements are on the plat. And that's the concern of, of the matter tonight.
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
I still have a few more things in my rebuttal if I have time.
Are there any other questions at this time? No, go ahead.
I just want to say that in reference to Colin's aerial photographs, I went in and met with him and we took a look at the aerial photographs under a magnifying glass. And it is absolutely impossible to tell anything from those aerial photographs, whether there's decks there or not. There's too much shading and it's just too small, it's unusable. Secondly, as far as that sketch goes, the, I've asked multiple times for the sourcing of the sketch because it's just merely a handwritten sketch with a number on it. Anybody could have submitted this, it has no, the dimensions to the sketch do not match my house at all. And I've, I brought that up, that I don't even believe this goes along with my house. And thirdly, just to reiterate, the picture in nineteen eighty-six, if you reference page twenty-four in the upper left-hand corner.
24 in the upper left-hand corner, and then cross-reference it to page 91, you can clearly see that there was nothing added whatsoever to those front entryway.
Sorry, maybe this is a stat, staff question. Through the chair. About the stairs, I get that they've got this, on page 91, there's this dimension, and you say you don't know where you came from. I kind of agree, you know, if you're, you have a, if you have something like that, you know, there's got to be a complete document, it's got to be stamped, it's got to be something in order to give it some kind of credibility. I'm looking at a picture from 89 that shows stairs and a landing. And I'm just wondering, you know, if you, if you took that 97 building sketch out, I mean, would you assume that those stairs would have been there prior to and would be legally nonconforming?
Sorry, through the chair, could you repeat the question?
That was really long. I'm just wondering, through the chair, sorry. There's a building sketch noted that is from 1997, right? And it's on page 91. And it's true, we don't know where this came from, right? I mean, if you're going to hinge something on a document or a sketch, it's got to be stamped or something, you know, something to give it a little credibility. So, we have right next to it a picture of stairs at a landing that has a date of 89 on it, you know. Is that right, too? I don't know. But what I'm wondering is, what are we hanging our hat on here as far as when those stairs were, were built?
So, the, the sketch and the photos were per the nonconforming determination from a property appraisal record. I have no further information other than that.
One other thing I'd like to add to discredit that particular drawing, is I have photographs here that I could, I would like to give Exhibit B, since I did the other one. And they show a stand back at that backside deck where you asked what was added. You can clearly see that in this photograph that there is a sliding glass door where it makes sense you would go out to a deck. And if you look at that drawing, it shows the decks on that drawing at the back of the kitchen, which I'm showing in this bottom photo, is the range. There's no windows, there's no nothing going out to that deck on that photograph or on that sketch. So, can I submit this?
Sure. Give it to the secretary, she'll put a number on it, and then we'll pass it down. Yeah, we'll pass one on one.
This here is 82086, right after the house was built. Okay, that shows the stairs, and you can see the railing for their entryway deck.
Correct.
Now, make sure that, I can't hear everything you're saying, I'm sorry.
I submitted that. Yes.
Oh, you submitted this? Good. See, you can see the entry, you can see the railing, everything for the entryway. That was 86 when it was first built.
Correct. Yes.
Are you done, Mr. Hale?
The last thing I'd like to say, just for the record, is when I was finally approved with my financing, this could have all gone away. We could have never been here today and had this meeting. But in getting to know these neighbors, they're great people, and this whole neighborhood has this issue. And although I feel that I'm the guinea pig putting my case out there, it's going to come about for everybody in the neighborhood at some point or another. And I think that just with a little bit of common sense and logic, this, there was clearly some loss in translation back in the 80s. And it's, it's a private maintenance easement. That if we can all come to an agreeance on, which we have as a neighborhood, we should be able to grant the variance on my property and so forth, and everything should be able to go along.
How did we start? Who got, who came first? Okay, so, Mr. Hale.
Through the chair, I, one quick question. Can we get testimony that, are those the original stairs?
To the best of my knowledge, being a new owner, they, they are the original stairs.
We had, we had some history here.
This picture is 1986 when the house was just first built, and it shows the original stairs and the original width of the deck, entryway deck.
And you believe those to be the original stairs?
Yes.
In 1986. Then I guess my question would be, would it be staff?
One other thing I'd like to add to that comment is, I did not mention this, but I'm a Cal Poly grad, construction management, architectural engineering, 2001. And my prior profession was building in the state of California for 10 years. And to the best of my knowledge, when I look at the caissons that the posts are set in, they look to be 1980s concrete.
So, through the chair, I guess my question would be of staff. Can I ask you guys a question? So, if we're to believe the parole testimony here, that all of those stairs were 1986, would that make them legally conforming, nonconforming?
I don't believe so, because they were constructed in easement.
Because they're still in the easement.
Right. And the, so the heart of the issue is really just that there, the stairs are projecting into a recorded easement. And that is the main, the main problem here.
Had the easement been recorded after the stairway had been constructed, then it would be nonconforming. But because it was vice versa, it can't be.
Now, if we look at the property line in the R1A zoning, it requires a five-foot setback. If we were to utilize a five-foot setback on the side at question, then it would be a conforming structure. But because it's got this declaration that was added in there for zero lot line as a private easement, that's where it becomes an issue.
Albert.
Are you done, Mr. Hale?
That 1985 law was for zero lot line homes. Then they built single-family homes.
Correct. Yeah.
Doesn't work. None of it works. That's why we're all out of compliance.
Right.
Ms. Dole.
Well, first of all, I just couldn't hear that last comment, so I'd ask that it be repeated louder.
Could you come up and?
To clarify what Mr. Smythe was confused about, and that's what I had mentioned as well, that 1985 code was made for zero lot line homes, which were going to be originally built in all three of those cul-de-sacs. They built single-family homes in 1986. That's where something happened in there, where there's no communication or where something didn't get changed. And that's why we're all out of compliance. I mean, that's why if you wanted to go by the letter of the law, according to that, to this code, I'd only have six inches that get into my house, because I only have, you know, I think it was 10 feet required. I got 10 foot six between my wall and the neighbor's wall, where my front door is at. So, that, like he says, this is just, it just really doesn't apply. Because I can understand where that appraiser's coming from, but none of those people knew that there were supposed to be zero lot line homes built there for that code, which there was not. They're single-family homes built. That's all I had to say. Just to kind of add on to what he was trying to straighten out.
So, Ms. Dole.
I have a question for staff, so if someone else wants to ask questions of the applicant, I can wait.
Mr. Ayers, did you have a question? No? Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Dole.
Okay. Through the chair, to the staff, I actually had a couple of questions. I wanted to know what you, if this issue had come up before with other houses in the subdivision, or what you had to say after hearing the testimony of all these folks about the same issue existing in, sounds like a lot of houses in the subdivision, and there was a page of examples. So, I was just wondering if staff had looked into that at all, or if this issue had come up before with a subdivision.
So, to our knowledge, it has not come up in the past. And we, we did look at the fact that, you know, potentially, some of the other buildings were, were similar to this case. But in a variance case, we can only really consider the facts of the property, facts at hand for the applicant and the property in question. And while there are others in the subdivision that may or may be encroaching on the easement, that's not necessarily pertinent to this individual case.
Sure. I was just curious. I, and I guess then, if I understand correctly, on page, tell me if I understood correctly, someone asked before, on page 89, there's a statement that says that the rear, and it's in the first paragraph, the rear deck was enlarged sometime after 1997, increasing the nonconformity. And you base that on looking at the aerial photos and also looking at the measurements on the diagram on page 91, and then the as-built on page 93? Is that what you said before? I want to make sure I understand.
Yes, that's correct. And just a brief note, the, the nonconforming determination is, as many of you know, to primarily to establish that whether or not the structure itself was, is legally nonconforming. And that's, so that's why there is much discussion about the, the enlargement. Because an enlargement of an existing nonconformity is something that the nonconforming determination considers heavily. It's not necessarily as pertinent to this case before us with the variance, because again, the heart of the issue is there's, there is a maintenance easement, and there is something that's encroaching into it, whether or not it was enlarged.
Okay, thank you. I don't have other questions.
Ms. McNulty?
I, I guess I, I kind of wanted to maybe clarify or kind of restate what I think maybe the crux of the issue is, and kind of get to Commissioner Smythe's question. But what appears to me is that this was originally platted for a zero lot subdivision. A year later, it was decided to be constructed as a single-family residential development. That maintenance easement would not have been required for a single-family residential subdivision. At that time, the developer should have come back and actually probably amended the plat to remove that maintenance easement. So, to answer the question about whether this should be here or not, and I apologize, I've, I've been away, so this is, I just got back to the office, and I'm, not to make excuses, but I have, just reading this and getting up to speed, I actually believe that this is a plating issue, and that the plating note actually needs to be removed. Because after hearing the testimony, I mean, and I don't know if, what kind of issue you have with your, your financial institution, and if we need to grant the variance tonight to get you square with your financial institution, I would recommend making a decision for, for Mr., and I don't want to butcher your name.
Saroyan.
Saroyan. Saroyan, thank you. But I think that we need to take this back, and, and I don't, I don't know if the developer is still around. I think that this is going to be a little bit of a bigger issue, but I think we actually need to remove the plat note.
Through the chair. So, I guess as a board, we're required to follow these eight. So, we can't just be granting variances, right?
Touche.
So, I mean, what, what's the resolution?
So, this is an interesting conundrum, because you're right, we do have the eight criteria, and we expect those to be substantially met in order to grant a variance. In this particular case, I don't, if, I would say the best, cleanest way would be to couch the decision and, and go to the, to the plating board. I don't know what kind of predicament that puts the applicant in from a financial situation in order to close on your house. I think that if we look at some of the conditions, maybe we can determine that they could be substantially met, and try to get this one approved, and then remedy the rest of the subdivision separately through the plating process.
Mr. Saroyan, do, does not having a decision tonight impact your financial?
Not at this time. I was able to, to work out another solution for that.
So, can, can we just postpone this tonight?
I, I'm going to kind of look to Lori. I'd like to postpone it. I don't want to postpone it indefinitely, in case we come up with it. If for some reason we can't do the replat, I don't know if we're going to need to get all the property owners to, I, I don't know what the challenges of that would be. So, I don't want to postpone him. What would be the best way to do this, Ms. Blake?
So?
So that if he needs to come back, and we need to hear this, that we can, if for some reason we can't go through the plating process.
Well, if I was to have my variance, regardless of my variance is granted, I'm standing by my neighbors, because I feel like it's, it's a problem that was, like I said, lost in translation before, and I think it can be rectified. So, I plan to see this through until everybody gets what they need.
Right. No, not yet. Mr. Hale?
Through the chair. Can I ask a quick question? If this doesn't get resolved tonight, is it an issue for you if it doesn't happen for a year? I mean, you got time?
No, I have time. But I would like to not see it go for a year, but yeah.
Well, it just sounds like what people want to do is make it all right, you know, not just for you, but for your neighbors.
I'm not selling my house tomorrow. I don't want to come back here.
I'm not saying it's going to take a year. What, what they're trying to, we're just trying to come up with a resolution that will benefit everyone.
Absolutely.
It may, it may be a little bit longer. So, if you're set for now, then that's a consideration.
I am set for now.
Mr. Ayers.
This isn't a question of, the petitioner or necessarily staff, it's a comment. You know, we have a case before us with evidence that's been presented in the testimony, and my thought is we should take action on that case. I understand everybody else's comments and the concerns with the, the issue of their neighborhood, but we can't address that under this case. It hasn't been public notice that way. We don't have any authority to address that, even though it does appear to be an issue. I was here in the 80s. I'm very familiar with this developer. I know what took place. Basically, a lot of these subdivisions were foreclosed on, and that developer came in and bought these things. They changed the zoning. There was no market for zero lot line homes, so they put up single-family homes. And obviously, it created some problems. But that was a long time ago, and now we're just finding out about that and how it's affecting people, which is very unfortunate. Having said that, I think we have enough information in front of us to act on this case tonight. And if, if there is a way for this neighborhood to bring a case forward to the city, or the city would be willing to address that for them holistically, that would be awesome. But I don't think we're going to resolve that here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So, if there's nothing else, if no one else has a question of the petitioner? Oh, no. You didn't have any more, did you? No, yeah. Nobody else has anything, then we will close the public hearing, and the matter rests with the board.
Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
May I have a positive motion, please? Mr. Ayers, is there a second?
Okay, so, on case number 2018-0103, a variance to allow decks and stairs to encroach 1.6 feet into the platted 7-foot zero lot line private maintenance easement, I would move for approval of the variance subject to staff's recommendation on page six.
And Mr. Hale seconds?
I second.
Mr. Ayers, would you speak to your motion, please?
Okay, so, we've heard a lot of testimony here tonight, and I do intend to support my motion. Recognize issues like this are probably going to continue to arise as a Recognize issues like this are probably going to continue to arise as they become known, and I hope that there is a resolution for the entire neighborhood at some point out there. Dealing with this particular case, I do find that condition A is substantially met. I believe that the fact that this subdivision was designed for a different type of housing, and then ultimately developed with a different type of housing, is a physical characteristic, and therefore, I find that condition met, or substantially met. Condition number B, I believe that those physical characteristics and circumstances I just described also applies there, so I find that standard to be substantially met. I find the standard for number C, that that one has also been met. This hardship was not imposed by the people that own these houses now, it was created during the development and construction of that subdivision. Number D, I concur with staff that that has also been met, as well as E and F. Condition G doesn't really apply in this case, and I also find that condition H has been substantially met, that this is a reasonable, the minimum variance that allows reasonable useful land. Thank you.
Mr. Hale, do you have anything to add?
I agree for pretty much the same reasons, in particular with A, with the small lot sizes and the maintenance easements that, you know, really shouldn't have been there for this type of a development. It certainly is an extraordinary physical circumstances. And on C, with the hardships not self-imposed, it, it looks to me like the stairs have been there for quite a while, probably encroaching, and it was built that way, and it's not due to the owner. The rest, I'll just concur with Mr. Ayers.
Anyone else? Not? Oh, Ms. Dole?
Yes.
Sorry.
I agree with what my colleagues have said, but I also wanted to add that with respect to B, that there was testimony that it would not, that there would be undue hardship in terms of making the stairs smaller or narrower, and the deck, and also that there was a safety issue with regard to the stairs. So, just wanted to add that to my reasoning to the, for voting on that one.
Anyone else have something? Is there any objection to approval? Not, please vote. There you go. Okay, next order of business are reports. I don't have anything to report. I believe that Ms. McNulty had a little something to say. Lou?
Through the chair, Michelle?
I'd like to, sorry, I'd like to take a moment to thank Ms. Dole for her five years and nine months as a volunteer on the zoning board of Examenos and Appeals. On behalf of the planning department and the administration, thank you very much for your volunteer service.
Thank you. It has been a pleasure, at least at certain times. And, but it actually, the part that's been the pleasure has been working with everyone else on the board, and, and learning about these interesting issues, but, but anyway, it's, it's been, anyway, I think, thank you, everyone, for making it easier. And good luck.
Thank you.
Any board member have anything to say? If not, motion to adjourn. Chris Iker, Dale Smythe, we're adjourned.